I think so.
I'll have to figure out the street name and ask because it's a really neat house. I drove by an old student here in Kelly.
Hey Bob, you've got a copy of this, right? Is that what that is?
Yeah.
That last page are the green lines, the lines that you and the fellow that you had gone around with. That's where you looked at?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're having a special meeting tonight, of course, for DTE. And generally, it's a public meeting. We have a quorum here, so we would like to do the pledge of allegiance, if that's all right with you. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a special meeting on August 19th, 2015. And we're going to have the DTE folks, whoever wants to speak first, probably best to come to this microphone here and you'll face the audience, okay? You know, the general thing of introduce yourself and blah, blah, blah.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, members of city council, members of city staff, those of you in the audience here, and those of you that are going to be in the television audience. My name is Michael Palchesko. I'm DTE Energy's Regional Manager, Corporate and Government Affairs, here in Oakland County. And this evening, I'm joined by two of my colleagues, Mr. Brian Hill, who's the Director of our Line Clearance Tree Trimming Group at DTE, and to his left, Joe Robinson. Joe's the manager of our Tree Trimming Line Clearance Group at DTE. You all have received a packet of information. This evening, we'd like to go through that packet, which provides you with an overview of our tree trimming program. And then, we're going to talk some about some upcoming projects here in the South Lyon area, which of course will be followed by a question and answer session. So at this time, I'm going to call my colleague Joe Robinson to the, or Brian to the podium, to begin the presentation.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening. Again, my name is Brian Hill, and this is Joe Robinson. And collectively, we lead the line clearance and tree trimming programs on behalf of DT Energy. Let's set a little context to begin with here. You know, our customers expect and deserve safe and reliable power. And I'm sure many of you have experienced outages over time, right? And our, we want to make sure that our customers have safe and reliable power. And when trees begin interfering with the power lines, right? There's potential safety hazards that exist, and then it causes reliability issues. So in fact, today, when we look at our reliability numbers, two-thirds of the time, our customers spend without power are related to trees, right? So that is the reason why DT Energy and every utility has a line clearance, tree trimming program, is to provide safe and reliable power to its customers. We also recognize that there's a balance in this, right? Communities and trees are a big part of our communities in the state of Michigan, right? So we have to find the balance between delivering safe and reliable power, right? And protecting the beauty and the health of the communities that trees provide to each and every one of us. So Joe and I are here going to describe our tree trimming process that we follow, right? And we believe that strikes the proper balance between delivering reliable and safe power and protecting the health and beauty of the communities and the trees, right? So we'll walk you through our four-phase process of how we go about doing this work. We'll also talk about a program called Right Tree, Right Place, which is the balance of you can have, trees and power lines can coexist together, right? If you have the right species of tree in the right area, trees and power lines can coexist together. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And at the end, we'll take any questions that you may have. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe, and Joe's going to walk us through. We'll begin on page two, for those of you that have handouts, which is our four-phase process. So I'll turn it over to Joe. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. As Brian said, there is a balanced approach, right, to, to our program. And I think the key for us is to recognize how important communication is and collaboration, that we're going to want to work with you every step of the way through the entire process. So looking at our four phases, a majority of the focus is on customer communication. So if you look at the very first Chevron at the very top, it says Phase One. Phase One is the initiation phase. That's when we identify the work that's going to be done on each of the circuits in each of the communities. At that point in time, once it's identified what type of work we would do, we work with our regional relations team that reaches out to the, to the government entities, such as city councils, city managers, mayors, different public officials. That, at that point in time, they have the information on the type of work in the area we would do in the community for line clearance, tree trimming. So at that point in time, we recognize when we start doing work, many times in the community, the residents start calling the city officials. So we want to make sure well in advance, the city officials are notified, they know exactly what, what the scope of the work's going to be, and they're aware of exactly which areas and which communities, and what our approach is going to be. So notice, though, there's a timeline right, right below it. So we're talking about 12 to, 12 to six weeks out before any of the work is going to be done. So this is well in advance, before any crews would show up on any of the properties. And clearly, at that point in time, the scope of work would be understood by the government entities at that point. Once there is understanding from them, at that point in time, we would reach out to the customers through two points of communication. We would send letters to the residents, based on our billing records and our customer information, we'd send letters to their homes describing exactly the approach we would do and our overall process, which I'll get into in a minute. After the letters would go, or in parallel with that, at the same time, we would actually send phone calls to the residents as well. So you'd have two points of contact at that point with the customers, knowing we're still well in advance, weeks in advance of us coming onto the property, okay? So that's Phase One. That's the initiation phase. Phase Two, at that point, government entities are communicated to, the customers will know that we're coming. At that point in time, we have DTE-certified tree people that come out, trained with the science of tree trimming. They understand trees. They understand the scope of trees, the species of trees, how to trim them, what the best approach is for each, each of the species of trees. At that point in time, they would go out and start to plan, customer by customer. But before they would enter the property, they would knock on the door. They would be ID-badged with a DT ID badge. They would have a hard hat, safety vest, and you would very clearly know that they're a DTE representative. At that point in time, once they announced who they are, introduced themselves, usually by name, so you know who's working on your property, they would go out and they would plan tree by tree, exactly what we would like to do collaboratively with you. The key, as Brian said, it's a balanced approach. So we would look at the trees that we would propose to trim, and we'd look at the trees that we proposed to, to do any type of removals, if that was required. So at that point in time, we'd mark trees, and they would also identify them in a computer handheld device, GPS-equipped, that would log each and every tree in that device, tree by tree, property by property. But if we stayed at that one customer address, as, as this example, they would mark the trees that were being trimmed with a dot. And for the trees that were going to be, or proposed to be removed, we'd put a red ribbon on them at that point in time. Once the planning were done with that property, the planner would go back to the customer and review the plan with them. If there were any removals, they would have a tree removal permit signed at that point in time, and they would review the, the scope of the work with them, if the customer so choose so. So at that point in time, if they wanted to walk down the property with them, with the plan that's in writing, they would point out the removals, and they would point out the trims. And at that point in time, there would be a clear understanding of the scope of work. So that would be the first, and then basically what we would do is we'd work our way down the circuit, customer by customer. So that's Phase One. At that point in time, the customer's clearly aware with what the scope of the work's going to be. And again, we're-
Excuse me, you said that this is Phase Two.
I'm sorry, what did I say? Phase One? Okay, yeah, Phase Two, thank you. Yeah, oh yeah, thank you. So at that point in time, we just described, Brian just remind me, what happens if I'm not home? So that, that's a great deal. We do not want to surprise people, so we want to make sure, again, we're working collaboratively with each of the customers. So if you're not home, after the plan would be done, we'd leave a door hanger on your door with the customer, or with the, the planner's contact information, cellphone number typically, their name and number for you to call them back, and they'll arrange a time to come back and review the scope of the work with you in, you know, face-to-face conversation again. And at that point in time, if you wanted to walk down the property, it would also describe from the letter what, exactly what the scope of the work was. So when you came home, you could review, you would see the dots, and by the way, the dots are at the base of the tree, and the X's are small X's there at the, at the base of the tree, if that's what we were choosing to do. At that point in time, though, obviously, there would be a red ribbon at that point. You'd be able to go through and see which trees were marked, and which trees were marked for removal, and which ones for trim. So we'd leave that door hanger, call you back, set up appointment, and come back and review the scope of the work with you. So that's pretty much the planning process, customer by customer, resident by resident, to ensure that we're working with you every step of the way. So that's Phase Two. And then from about, you know, that, that reaches almost two weeks before the tree trimming would happen. And the majority of the time, it's well in advance of two weeks before the tree trimming would happen. At that point in time, that entire circuit plan would be turned over to some DTE expert contractors that are trained on the science of tree trimming. They know exactly what type of trims and removals to do. And at that point in time, they would be, they would have that written plan in hand that was already reviewed with the customers. And at that point in time, they would walk through each of the trims, by species, by location, by customer address. For the remove, they'd make sure that they have a, a tree removal permit in the package before anything were removed, and basically work the exact work scope to the customer, and we review together in Phase Two. So at that point in time, it's very clear what's going to happen on the customer's property. And basically, at that point in time, that's exactly what happens.
If the customer's not home and they don't contact DTE, what happens?
We continue to go back multiple times until we get contacts. If there is a tree removal proposed, we continue to reach out to the customers to ensure that we get that tree removal agreement with them signed. We, we ensure that it's not just the resident, that it's the property owner. So that's a key, that's a key point. And four, we'll continue to follow up to make sure that we have contact. And we've had in the past where, where there's been residents in Florida, and we've, we've contacted them after they've gotten back. Okay?
Question from my side.
Yeah.
So if you're trying to get everybody's approval and contact, and somebody, let's say, is in Florida in that instance, but you're scheduled to go in and let's say, one block, but you can't get ahold of that one person, would you not do their house, or skip their house and then come back at a different time? Or do you come in all at one time, do the whole area, and then move on to the next area?
If we can't contact the customer, we're going to do everything we can. But in that case, where we've had multiple contacts, we, we would come back when the customer was, was available to review it with them.
And then, let's say, for example, the person does not sign off on paperwork to remove the tree, you would do the other trees around the area and not cut down the trees, or whatever the case may be, and the person who is still, you're still working with?
That's exactly correct, yeah. So no, no tree would be removed without that customer acknowledging it and, and being on-site to acknowledge it. That's correct.
Now, your Phase One and Two, that's in, Phase One and Two that you're talking about, that is for personal property. You haven't discussed anything yet about, like, just easements. Because if it's an easement that runs through the person's property, that's really not their property. Are you concerned about the easements for people that live on corners, or people that have the utility easements behind their house?
So that's a great question. But the answer is, we, we approach every property, even though that an easement goes, does go through, and we would quote "have the right to do it," we would, it's still going through the customer's adjoining property, correct? So we want to make sure that we're working with them in the same way that these two phases are actually, four phases are laid out. So we don't approach it any differently. If an easement goes through your yard, we recognize that, you know, there's some work that should be done, but we want to make sure, again, we're working collaboratively with the customers.
Okay.
So there's not a separate process.
Okay.
I just want to ask one. Do you have an explanation of how this so comprehensively did not roll out like that?
You're talking about, you're talking about what, the rollout of this program?
Virtually everything that you've just said happened. I received the letter, the people that are losing trees and stuff, one after another after another, said they had no contact until they saw people in their yards.
Sure. Are you talking about, yeah, so part of, part of what we're talking about is, is the approach that we're going through now in the last, about, about the last four or five months. This has been our approach in, in all areas of DTE.
That's not the way it happened here, though. That's concerning.
You know, if I may, I might say-
So are you talking about, I guess, what was the scheduling of the tree, tree work that you were talking about?
We got noticed from these people in July 23rd, I believe, and you were going to be cutting the trees in two days.
When you just said Phase One, Phase Two has never happened, and we're from Colonial Acres, and you, you took a red tag all the way down 11 Mile, period. You didn't care what size tree that was.
And this is consistent with what's happened.
Could you repeat the question?
The removal versus the trimming has to do with the, the, what the species of the tree is in respect to the power line, how close it is to the power line, and actually, the preferred treatment would be to, to trim it. But in some cases, if it were trimmed at a certain point, if a certain percentage of the tree were removed at that point in ti, or trimmed at a certain point in time, it would not necessarily survive, right? There's a science behind trees. In that case, we wouldn't. So we'd have to review that, correct? Yeah. Yeah, so great, great question. So what we'll do is, what I'd like to do is get your information afterwards, and we will absolutely follow up with that.
Well, the thing is, we have, we live in Colonial Acres, two of those pine trees, I paid for them.
Sure.
Nobody said anything to us, they just red-tagged them, and that was it. Down closer, down east of us is tall pine tree. They are not touching the wires. I can understand trimming.
Sure.
But if we had a tornado come through here, there is no way those could even come close to those-
Sure. So yeah, specifically, go ahead, I'm sorry.
They red-tagged everyone, they're going to remove them.
Yes, yes.
And I think one part of the process that Joe really focused on, right? We will mark the trees, right? But his point is, we are not going to remove a tree until we have a conversation with the customer, right? So if there's dialogue or concerns on why you marking this tree versus that tree, that's what we're here for, is to, is to work with you, to make sure that we understand and we get agreement.
Yeah, but I understand that, but you just went through Phase One and Two, and you, you haven't done that with the customers.
Joe, we got all the way to Phase Three, where we all, some of us got door hangers standing there. When I called Dean here, Dean is not an arborist. Dean works for a tree removal service. Dean is, I'm a utility easemaker.
Sure.
And I was told, well, you know, like it or love it, this is what we're doing. And I said, love it, stay on my property. And so we had a discussion. I had contact council, other people were at, we didn't go through Phase One, we're two, we're at Phase Three. That's why everyone sitting here is very, 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 um, disconcerned about what you're telling us. Phase One, Phase Two never happened with any of them sitting here.
Okay.
And from what we read in the news, it hasn't happened with a lot of people either. So I, I, we're expecting any of us to trust Dean kind of hard at this point.
Yeah, just a safe, safe thing. I didn't, I had somebody come out three weeks ago to my house. I live in Eagle Heights off of 11 Mile, knocked on my door. Just the only reason I recognized who invited him was because he pulled up in a construction company truck that I recognized, just regular street post, just said that he was out in the area, just wanted to make contact with us to let us know that DTE is aggressively taking back their easements, and that anything within 15 feet of that pole is being clear cut, not trimmed, but being taken down to the stump, and you have no rights. His name was, and I was a different person, this person's name was Randy. And he cut, he got ahold of me today and let me know he's going to be out speaking with us. And I contacted my homeowners association, they've been in contact with Joe, with different members, they've sent me pictures that the representative has already been out and taken pictures of our, of our, you know, area in our backyard. We butted up to 11 Mile. When we moved into the house, these trees were pre-existing. We've got mature evergreens, there are trees that I will agree that, yes, they, they are close to the pole. I agree wholeheartedly, yes, if those need to come down, fine. But from what I'm being told from this gentleman named Randy, is that if it is within 15 feet of that pole, or from where the outward lines are, an additional five to eight feet from there, whichever, wherever it falls, if that stump falls within that line, whether it's a hazard or not, it's being taken down to the ground. So I have 11 evergreens, pine trees, spruce mix above that. I'll be left with a few bushes.
I, that's what I was told, same thing.
Yeah, and, and, and area that will look like it just got hit by a tornado.
It's been a back of the 9 Mile. My, my house is, my back door is less than one-third of a whole hall filled with 9 Mile. And my, my teenage daughter told me there's a man walking around in there, and I just said, that's exactly-
So I, so I guess this is, I guess this is the feedback we're looking for, so obviously, there isn't going to be-
Is it Phase One or Two at one?
Yeah, give it, give us an opportunity, yeah, let's look at it.
I think what I want to make sure we recognize here too is, you know, we are not going to remove, we said that at the very beginning, right? We are not going to remove a tree without a sign from the customer.
You said that in Royal Oak as well, and those trees still came down.
Well, that's not, that's not, that's actually correct.
No, no trees came down, go to zero trees came down. I must have misread the article then from the paper. They may, maybe got it wrong.
So we, so we've, so Joe and I have been involved a lot, so if customers have a concern, right? So Joe and I will go out and meet with you as well. Since we implemented this new process, we've been able to reach resolution with every customer, by finding a balanced approach, as we talked about earlier.
Yeah, I'm on 10 Mile, just outside the city, but I didn't get a guy until about two and a half weeks ago. And it's the same scenario as the other one, outside of the city, I think it's Dean. But regardless, I've been there for 10 years. Every other year you come out, you get a notice, you trim them, not a lot. This is the first time a guy come up to my yard, standing in the backyard as I'm watering my dogs, not acknowledging me, he's already got half my tree red-tagged, and I literally had to go up to and argue with the guy until he finally said, okay, sign a piece of paper that says you don't want to do this. No computer, no system, I got his number, and his first name. I joked with all my neighbors and discussable them, I go to these other divisions, they had to call the guy because they didn't want to work the flag before. He was spraying the middle of the trees, not the bottom of the trees, we had no idea what was going on. But literally, if you were to do everything on 10 Mile where we're at, we all would be facing 10 Mile with absolutely no privacy, for our dogs, kids, nothing.
Sure.
And there's no way that can be possible. And the 15 easement, I'm still having to check, because if that's the case, it's on my property. And I don't know how that's possible, but you're cutting my trees down that I paid for. So I just want to reassure us tonight that you're trimming and not removing anything unless I'm signing something, because I was told you're two weeks out and you're going to be at my house.
Yeah, so there's not, just to reiterate again, here's the great news. As, as much as you're saying here, there hasn't been any trees removed, there's not going to be any trees removed unless a permit's signed.
But that's because there was a hornet's nest created as a product of the way that your, your people or your contractors had related to these customers.
Yeah, Joe and I are saying, you know, we obviously have to go back and understand. You know, we described the phases to you, it sounds like there's some gaps in the phases, and Joe and I will get into that.
We're hoping this is an education for you, and you guys, actually, because the letter that you had sent out June 24th was very specific, and the whole thing essentially was encapsulating what you have here with the contact number, in the event that there's any misgivings with the decisions that have been made. I thought if that rolled out, everything is going to be fine. You know, some people will probably see it a little more aggressively than, than what might have been necessary, but nobody would have been up in arms like this, thinking they're getting ambushed to have their trees taken out. So you need to make sure that your plan rolls out the way that it's demonstrated on this document.
And to that, to that point, the way I found out about this was through my neighbors. On 7/20, I was notified by my neighbors that they received a plaque saying, plaque card saying that they were going to be removing or trimming trees on 7/23, three days' notice. Three days' notice, consistent with what everybody's saying about that Phase One or Phase Two is not complete. So at that time, I got on the phone with our city manager, I, I sent emails, and I got, I met with every single resident in our subdivision, and the story was the same across the board. So we want to make sure that everything's being done responsibly. And thank you for meeting with us, but there's still some more work to do.
We don't disagree.
We don't disagree, absolutely.
Are the gentlemen that are trimming the trees, they would directly, or are they third-party?
Well, they're contractors.
Contractors, okay. So there's a communication gap between you and the third-party folks.
The guy told me he gets paid because of the trees now. After I gave him enough crap and yelled at him a lot, he basically said, I'm not going to get in my industry.
Yeah, he's got a best interest in cutting trees.
They would trim them so bad they're going to die anyway, so you have to have a cut.
I have 100 questions.
That's what he said to me, and that was Dean.
I have a tree needle cast disease, cost me over $3,000 in my insurance. And he got, and he tells me he's an arborist. I said, are you sure? And you're an arborist, can't you say that these trees are the ones that's done? Are you an arborist, or are you not? Finally, I was told, no, I'm a tree removal agent, that's what I am, I am not an arborist. And I said, fine. And he said, well, you know, we don't remove your trees, you're going to talk to somebody. I'm higher paid than you, so I guess so, you guys. He just told me that as a question, he started saying that-
Well, there's, there's one for this area.
You're talking about one guy is obviously not proud, and your guy is rude, and I would think you might-
Let me, let me, I might make sure I answer your question correctly. We have one company that's doing the planning for us. There are a few employees that do that work on behalf of that contractor, right? So I've heard a couple of names here. But there is one company, sorry. So we know, Joe and I know where to go. So there's one contractor.
Well, you do recognize the problem when you, it's incentivized by how many units they take out. You know, clearly, they're motivated for profit, that, so they want to cut as many trees as they can get their, their permission to do. And if there's a mistake in the, in the midst, and it goes to their side, they still get paid, so.
There's a, sort of a follow-up to that. I've already heard 15 statements, not necessarily by you, but other people that have talked to your representative. On this, it's saying 20 feet from the pole, but someone else is saying that it's also 10 feet from the top line. So what is it? Is it 20 feet from the pole?
Yeah, so if you guys, that's good. Let's go to the next slide.
Get away from that part.
Done with that one. No, seriously, I guess if you're done with that one, but since you did ask the question, let's go to it. But if you look at it, and everybody has it, where we're talking about the Right Tree, Right Place. So what this is, is really a, for us, it's education for our customers of what the right tree and the right balance would look like with power lines, right? They can coexist together. And if you look at the spacing of the tree with respect to the size of it, ornamental trees that are below the line, that will never grow above that 20-foot line, if you take a look at the 20-foot mark here, that tree could remain, right? So I mean, that, that tree's okay. It's, it's not going to grow into the power lines, it's not going to cause a safety or reliability issue, that would be okay. And then, as you space out further, the bigger trees would be at least that distance away that their potential height would be. So if you get a 50-foot tree species, you'd want it at least 50 feet away. So if it fell, it would never contact our wires. So that's typically what it looks like. And then, above the 20-foot mark, and usually a 20-foot mark is about where the, the lowest level wires are. That's typically the, the telephone wires and the cable. That's typically the top, the 20-foot mark. From that point up is what we'd want to be able to clear from the conductors, to make sure that no branches would fall onto them or come in contact with it. So that's pretty much the area that we would want to go and, to have some clearing in. Now, so the question on these ornamental trees, that they, they can coexist there. It's more or less from the conductor, depending on, the distance that we're really after the pole is just in support of it. So depending on the configuration of the, the wires and how they're held up, it's really from the conductor. That's really the distance.
Every tree at 10 Mile is literally parallel with the pole. So there is no, like, five feet on one side, five feet on the other, and the planes inside are all on the pole line, and a little on the plant, their own trees planted on the inside that fall, but then this guy telling me it's 15 feet easing them. So all the trees that I can possibly see go just above those two bottom wires, they don't actually even reach the wire yet.
Right.
But he's telling me that they're, regardless, because you just said they grow to a certain height. I don't care if you come trim them, but his other, other answer to me was, oh, then we're just going to come and top everything so it's all flat across the top. So if you do that to my arborist, my herbivores, and my maples, and all my pines, it's going to look horrible regardless. So I just want to know, are you trimming that one side of the tree, both sides of the tree? Are you topping them off, or?
I think the, yeah.
Are you just trimming them, or?
So if we were talking about a trim approach on your property, we'd have to go tree by tree and see exactly what the distances were, and then describe exactly what we would do with you. That, that's how it'd work. And, and anything that's roadside typically, the key for, for safety and reliability is access to the equipment. So typically, roadside is something that is much easier to access from that, and there's trimming approaches we do on roadside versus if it's deep woods and the back lot is a little bit harder to get to, for equipment and safety of the people that are living there, and also the safety of the people that are working on the equipment. So it depends, and that's why, in general, we'd work with you. That'd be the key. we'd work with you, that'd be the key.
I'm assuming, I'm giving you correctly, that DTE is paying you for this, but it's not going to cost me anything.
No, it will not cost you anything.
It just can't achieve, why do you think this is very illegal?
Great question, that is a very good question, actually, we looked at undergrounding cables, right, and the cost of it, if you look at, if you look at anything that's been built, new subdivisions since 1970 and on, pretty much it's all underground, we're talking about older, usually older neighborhoods, more traditional neighborhoods, but the overhead power lines are typically not buried, the, the higher, the higher distribution circuit lines are typically still above ground, the rule of thumb, when we looked at it in other communities and said, hey, why don't you just bury it, it's anywhere between five to seven million dollars per mile to bury it, once we have an existing system, to go back and retrofit many of the trees that are there now, that we've tried to avoid to, to, to remove with the overhead, to bury it, you got to, we would have to trench and dig, and many times disturb the root systems and, and damage trees at that point in time as well, so the cost is really not cost-effective, and there's other communities that reached out to us and said, hey, give us a price if you could underground it, and when we came back and had our engineering estimates come back, and it was, it was not cost-effective, when you multiply that by every resident in that community, what it would cost to, to add that to their bill to be able to do, so it's really a cost-balance approach, so the answer is, in any new construction, we do bury the underground, so it's just the older, it's the older communities.
Do you work with this big?
We do.
Then why don't you, because we have a smoke when we plant with our trees, why aren't they telling us that, no, you can't plant to this point, would that make it a lot easier?
It would, and that's why I included this in the deck, I, I mean, I think this is the key, what you just mentioned is that our ownership is education to everyone, right, if this were the ideal situation, this is how every community would look, we'd have these types of clearances, if we had this, ornamental trees within this densest and this plant, we wouldn't have to trim a tree in the whole entire, in the whole entire region, right, but things have grown up through the years, and now it's truly an education process to say, okay, we'd like to go through and work with you and get these clearances, and then work with the customers to include this in our mailings, to include it in with our customer communication on our website, also to include it with Home Depot and the other nurseries that would be, when you would go and buy trees, work with landscape architects and get the word out that this is really what we like planted near our wires, because in the end, nobody wants to go and spend money on a tree that would be trimmed later, right, we, we wouldn't necessarily want to trim it, what, that, you know, we just want to make sure, our key focus here now in this phase of it is customer education, and right tree, right place is something that we benchmark with other utilities that are about five years out, and it really is starting to catch on with them, that the community and the residents are really getting, when they go to a nursery, this is the right tree, in the right place, and it, it is much healthier for everybody, it's safer for everybody, healthier for the trees, I mean, and, and in the end, it does lower costs, because we wouldn't have to trim the trees in the future.
But if you're going to talk about education, this is not correct, mostly people here are going to tell their tree that we remove, it's not a trimming, it's a move, why is it-
Right, so just to, so, so just to clarify again, no, I get your frustration, I understand, so there is clearly, what you've been communicating to the people that said the trees were removed, let me just say, your trees have not been removed yet, and you're here and frustrated, and I understand that completely, Brian and I will personally follow up, and many of you that have talked to me about your, your, your situation, I'll get your contact information, and we'll stop, there is not going to be a tree cut here, down, with, without some type of customer agreement signed, so it's not a removal without a consent that you-
The guy who's standing out there, he's removed everything he can see.
He's planning, here's the key, he's planning, and it is, as you said, it is a communication issue, and I'm not trying to downplay that, but the key is, there hasn't been any trees cut down yet, that's the key, you're here, and we're not after the fact, and that's part of, we got what we need to improve in our communication, so the planners that we're planning with will clearly be met with tomorrow morning, guaranteed, and we're going to go through this process again, and we're going to correct the trees that, that you guys are concerned, that everyone here is concerned about.
The girl that will hand up this to us, it looks to me like they're telling you something, so I don't trust you, be honest, say, just trimming, removing, this looks dishonest.
You guys have to know what you're walking into tonight, right, you have to know how many red ribbons were up and down our main streets that are, I mean, it's-
So you're right, the red ribbons are there, but the key is, none of those red ribbons are going to turn into red Xs, or red, white Xs at the base of the tree until an agreement is signed.
Well, who is the customer in case a colonial acreage requires point, where they're just turning grounds for our properties, who's the customer who's signature, nobody's talked to me.
So we would reach out to whoever the, whoever the, the property owner would be, we would get the, we'd get the property records from real estate?
Contacted directly?
We met with Keith, they've not been contacted, but well, Brian and us-
After that.
After that, I mean.
Yeah, so we would reach out to whoever the property owner on record would be and work with them.
Can I, can I ask a question about that point about property owner, my understanding is, a lot of these times, these easements may not be recorded accurately, they may have been recorded years ago, do you have proof of, that you actually own all of these easements, because from what I've been told, you don't, it may be shoddy records, and then you say you have, you own all the easements, but that may not necessarily be the case, will you give proof to each homeowner that they, you actually own the rights to operate on there, those areas?
Yeah, sure, I mean, we, if, if that was something you were asking for, we would hope that-
That's what I'd request each homeowner to, I would suggest that you request.
Sorry, my, my neighbor and I, we're both defense staffs, okay, our trees are like this, they're in this level, if you, if you're trimming to your high level, our trees will die, all of them will be dead, the DTE plan of being a good neighbor and providing us with the barrier fronts, because this is the only barrier we have, which is a very busy night line, and the entrance to my home, I, it's bad enough right now, but I have so much traffic coming in and out of entrance, but now, without my barrier, my electricity bill is going to go up, my heating bill is going to go up, this, my, I, all kinds of equity in my house, after you guys take out, or even top off a tree this large every morning, almost a hundred foot tall, and he has them too, for instance, I will lose at least forty thousand dollars in that going anywhere else, who's paying for this, no, I'm the one who's having to take, I mean, how is the DTE going to be a good neighbor to me, and compensate me, other than doing me a favor by paying for a move, after I've drawn, struggling and tried, and so has he, he like, he's lying, this is ridiculous, guys.
So I think that's where, that's where, your unique situation, we'd have to meet with you individually and see exactly what the approach would be, right, so I mean, the key is, your safety first and foremost, and-
Oh, you guys are doing me a favor.
Well, well, we'll have to correct that, for sure, right, guys, so just, if you guys would give us a, you know, just give us an opportunity to follow up with that piece, that's definitely a gap.
The two gentlemen in the corners have been very, very patient with their little hands up, could, could we just hear from the two gentlemen before we continue, that one in the corner and this one in the corner?
So we talked about, you talked about trimming versus removal, and, and I live off of the 11 mile, I'm not directly affected, but indirectly, I see all the ribbons on the 11 mile, what's the percentage of trees in this area that you're planning on removing versus trim, because I haven't seen any white dots, now granted, I haven't been looking at the ground, but I certainly haven't seen, but I've seen a whole lot of red, there's clone trees from the high school that are slated to be cut down, according to the red ribbons, I don't understand, because I look at one tree versus the other, and one's got a ribbon, one doesn't, they're the same species, they're the same height, they were all planted at the same time, no rhyme or reason, what's the percentage, and what's your, what's your procedure for public properties, you talked about private, you talked about, you know, you know, subdivisions, what about the school, that's moving over half the trees along the 11 mile?
So, yeah, it would be the same process, where any of those trees that had a red ribbon on them, we'd work with that school, that government entity, and, and get this tree removal permit signed as well, we'd treat it the same way as any property owner, for sure, we would not, we would treat it exactly the same way, so again, they'd have red ribbons, and that's just a sign that that tree is what we're proposing, it's, it's not coming down, let me be very clear, it's not coming down until there's agreement signed, very clear.
What kind of percentage, I mean, you guys-
Good question.
-know, there's a number there somewhere.
It varies by circuit, and it varies once the plans come in, we would know what the percentage is, right now for the circuits you're talking about, I don't exactly have that data yet, but once it does come in, we would have the overall percentage of removals, but at this point, we don't, and-
This one, it's been-
But, yeah, you keep mentioning the contract, we know that there's a contract for removal, who's the arborist, and do you have contract information for that?
The arborist for-
The arborist, the one that's doing the service, and we keep, they keep talking about Dean and Randy, and he's coming around, he's saying, who's the-
So those, those are, those are planners that, that are doing the planning.
Who's the arborist, who's the-
We have a DTE, we have DT arborists that work for us directly, that, that oversee the-
Has that contact any of these people on the trees yet?
They will.
But then, according to your phase, they're supposed to do that before they come to mark the trees, you've got your phase back.
Actually, right, I hear you, I guess the, the, what, let me just clarify, the planner's the one that goes out and does the planning, so they should have knocked on your door and announced themselves, so that-
The trees marked in our stuff are, are on sale, they did not, and I'm, I have ten trees that are-
Right, so we-
That are on my property, and that's why they're not-
Sure.
I'm more concerned, I really don't care that somebody goes on, I have a different view as the bottom line, and I haven't heard that magic word yet, compensation, I put twenty grand in my backyard, and I have rocks, elevated rock garden, yada, 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 and I put those pines back there, and I know you guys are working with the landscaping companies for future stop, well, they go bankrupt every five years and move whatever state, it's not going to help, um, yeah, I'm, I'm more concerned, are you going to do anything, yeah, I think that eight of my ten are, or hidden, murdered row there, and I have feeling you're not, I think, God, I don't know how you didn't alarm people, like I said, I cannot let people know well the things, and by the way, I want you to know this, between here and Nobai, about eighteen hundred homes are going, something tells me this same damn meeting is going to happen in twenty years, and you guys have power, like a government, you have power, this should, there should be laws that make it, no, anyway, can you do this in advance, this meeting wouldn't happen, how the fact was happening twenty years?
Yeah, if we're, I hear you loud and clear, I mean, I think that's why it's so important to get the word out, and it's not going to be easy, right, communication to people, and you're absolutely right, companies that get it don't necessarily stay around, I understand that, but the key is-
That's what I said about what they do, they're going to come up with the prettiest design, and they're gone.
Yeah, and I think the, and I think our key approach is not only with the landscape architects and the nurseries, it's, it's key with our residents and our customers, that's the key, if you know, and I think that'll be part of it.
It's actually key that you guys get with planners, because the, these guys are talking about it's the corridor along the main road, so our planners end up insisting on trees for the perimeter to, to soften the view and all that kind of stuff, but if they had an obligation to put trees that weren't going to end up creating a hazard in twenty years, then it would make this whole thing a, kind of a moot point.
Glenn, Glenn Adams has been waiting a long time.
Yeah, I just have two questions, one, a moment ago, you spoke about for the pole, the transformer, the box, is that what you call it, the transformer, what you're talking about with the, you're talking about fifteen feet from the pole, are you talking about fifteen feet from the, from pole to pole, from outward from the line, I'm just trying to get a clarification, where that fifteen feet to either side, is it a radius from the pole, I mean?
No, so really, it's, it's, just to be clear, it's really distance from the conductor, and it varies based on, from the conductor, from the wire itself is really what we're trying to clear, the pole isn't as much a concern as clearance from the conductor, because that's where the-
So by conductor, you mean the conductor and anything-
The, the wire itself, so excuse me, the wire itself, let me be clear, the wire itself, that's what's carrying electricity, and that's what we want to make sure that the trees never come in contact with, not just to knock out the power, but also for customer safety.
And then second part, and that's my last question, the second part is, I live in a subdivision, it's considered a site condo, we have a management association, we have bylaws, that sort of thing, in our bylaws, there is a section in there that speaks to the easements, where it says that, you know, any utility companies to come in, maintain this, that, you know, has right over the easements, what I want to know is, as myself being the homeowner, it is on my property for my lot, yes, it is in, okay, once it's proven to me that it is your fifteen-foot easement, okay, what I want to know is, are you then going to come to me as the homeowner and say, this tree I agree with, let's say there's a couple of trees I don't agree with, are you then going to go and say, well, in your bylaws, your places of, you know, provided us, it says right here that we can do this, so you technically have no rights to this area, so I just want to know, are you going to, will you, if I say no to something on a tree, will you supersede that and then go to the, well, right here, and, you know, thirty years ago, and this was printed up, well, it says right here that we're going to go ahead and, you know, we had, you know, your bylaws provided that.
That is not all our, at all our plan to do that, I guess our goal is to make sure, again, that we're working with you well before the tree trimming occurs, so I mean, that, that would be the goal, so if it was something that we were saying, okay, it was a tree, that was a species that was more like this, right underneath the wires, you know, one of the hundred-foot trees that were right into the wires, there would have to be at least, if it wasn't removal, there would be some type of trim that we'd have to come up with, and that, that's what it would be.
Is it the footing, I guess you're just going to have to prove it to us, because as you can tell from the turnout, we're not going to just sit back idly and-
Sure.
Just take everybody, you know, take your word for it.
I certainly have a different situation, kind of opposite of, you know, most people here are having, but I have two, like, fifty-foot plus everlings in the front of my yard, on my lawn, and the lines go right straight through, and my straight through, mainly that, I was approached, like you said, exactly how you said you walked on to, absolute opposite of what down, um, he wanted to, then, wanted to, he put red ribbon around it, because I said, yes, cut them down, because I understood what needed to be done, two days later, he calls me, he sends a message that says, we're not going to cut your trees down, we're just going to trim, well, if they trim, I'm going to have, like, I don't know, twenty-three thousand, no, relax.
So, yeah, so we'll-
That's the problem.
I, I agree, so let's, we'll follow up with you afterwards and get your specific contact information, and if that's what was agreed upon in the initial plan, we'll take care of that.
Before I bought their undergrounded wall.
Right, right.
So, okay.
Right.
Just, I just, for some clarity, the map that you show here, the area in paint, that's scheduled for trimming and removal in 2018?
Two thousand and-
Just want to understand how the reason is, is that peak area for 2018?
Correct.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so basically what that was showing was the last time it was trimmed, and then the next time it's scheduled to trim is 2018, correct?
If I live along 11 mile, and they just marked all the trees, would they do it three years out of time?
No, they wouldn't, and I guess it depends on where you are, so here's the thing, what's marked here are really the distribution circuits, majority of the work that we're doing is on subtransmission, it's forty thousand volt wires that go through there, so typically that's why you, most people are here, is for that work, so depending on, depending on how the circuit configuration is, if it's subtransmission, that's the majority of the work that's happening this year.
I'm trying to explain that there's, there's, we have two sets of wires.
Yeah, yeah, to Brian's point, is there's, there's typically, sometimes there's poles with two sets of wires, if you see that there's ones that are very high with a very big conductor, or the very big insulators on them, that's typically our subtransmission, and that's why we'd work through that.
You live in a small acreage, you don't own the property, but some of us have put our own trees in.
Sure.
And you look and find out who the owner of the property is, you have no idea who I am, and those are my trees.
Sure, I, I guess the, the goal would be, again, that we'd, if the trees are lined up right in front of where your property is, regardless of what the easements are, who the, the right-of-way is, if it's a city tree or an association tree, we would ensure that you understood the work well before it would happen.
Why are they marking there?
In the back, yeah.
Can you tell me exactly when you're coming out to a specific area, like Ten Mile, because the guy was very adamant that you'd be out like the first week of September to do whatever he was planning on doing, so, I guess I want to know when, because I have the problem with that, when you're there, but the other is, who's actually doing the trimming, you or the company that this guy works for, because if it's the guy that works in my house, I'm going to be there because I don't trust him, and if, if that's the one I have to go after, or if you guys are going to get rid of one, I'll who it is, is it you that's coming out, or is this guy that's coming out?
So, so Joe and I, after, after today's meeting, Joe and I will be out, so we will work with you.
No, but who's trimming, who's doing the trimming?
So we have a company called Asplun that's designated for this area, they would do the trimming.
So that guy, who he works for, I don't trust the-
And here's what, here's what Joe and I have done in the past too, right, so if So if we're working very hand-in-hand with you, we have a lot of concerns about, right? We will actually be there when the job's taking place. We have no issues with that either.
So just real quick, the... So any trees that have to be cut down, and they're okayed off, and they get cut down, what do you leave, a stump? So is it up to the homeowner then to say they need that stump ground down? Or is the landscaping company gonna come through after they cut it, and then actually grind it down, level with the ground, so at least something can be replanted or grown over in that area? Or is it just cut, remove, and move on?
So in most cases, the tree is removed as flush with the ground as possible.
And we do nothing to replace the stump? You don't replace trees at all? You don't say for every tree you cut down, we'll plant one, and we'll put it in the right distance, the right time?
In most cases, we would try to work with the property owner to get the removals or trims if you wanted a tree there. And if it came down to removal, we would talk about what a healthy balance would be. So for example, if it blew open, you know, the, what you were talking about, where you had a, you know, some type of privacy issue or something, we would try to remove, we would try not to remove those trees, so we'd be in that situation. So the key is, there's very few cases that we would have to do a replanting together. I think in most cases, it would be a satisfactory solution for everybody.
So I have a backyard wedding planned, and it's a... Decimating the backyard, so how do I make sure those trees don't come down? Like, how do I personally, or me, do I... Like, my wedding will be ruined if all of those trees are back there.
So, yeah. If you leave Joe and I your contact information today, right, no work will get that.
I was told that you guys actually do have a tree replacement program. And then also, I was told by a person who came onto my house, they said that you guys would remove the stumps. If I requested the stump to be removed, that you would send somebody out, or they would come out and grind the stumps out at no charge.
Yeah.
I guess here's my question, is what's your tree replacement program? Because you're saying you work with each homeowner, but you guys actually have a program in place where if you cut down a tree, you're supposed to replace it. And then secondly, what about the stump grinding? You were saying that you cut it flush, but you weren't saying you grind it out, but this guy said you would, so again, it's a different story.
No, I guess that was, you know, what I had answered, is that's our typical approach. So grinding a stump down or cutting a stump flush is a typical approach. If there is a certain situation where it's a focal point of a yard, and there's a big stump left, we would offer some stump grinding if the customer requested it.
Okay, you're gonna make sure your contract, or whether it is, goes by what you just said.
Right. We understand, right? So I mean, if there's a big stump in a yard, right, you have a 100-foot tree there, and there's gonna be a big massive stump, we'd work through that. The reason why I didn't say we grind stumps in every single case is not every single stump can be ground. Sometimes fences are in the way, garages, objects, curbs. Sometimes we do work with mixed digs, because if there was stump grinding to be done, we do call them out. And if there's underground utilities, it may not. So that's why I'm saying, in many cases, we can't grind them, but in some cases, we will on the customer request.
And what about the tree replacement program that you guys actually have?
That's what I'm saying, is that that's a... We'd work with each customer, one by one, to determine what was the right, healthy balance.
Would that be decided prior to them signing off on the tree removal?
In most cases, absolutely, yes, right. We wouldn't come back after the fact, we'd talk about that, absolutely, yes. You know, in some cases, you know, that might be the right approach for that customer and that property and privacy and all the other things that would go on. And that's why each one's unique.
And would that discussion have to occur with what individual planner, who clearly has a major issue, or beyond him?
It would be beyond that person. They would escalate to somebody at DTE that would come out and work directly with you to talk about what options there are.
Do you have a central line, like hotline?
We do. Yes.
Can I talk about that, because I call the tree trimming hotline? I had to look everywhere for that number. And I got a lady on the phone, and she said she'd have to transfer me to this other number. And I said, could I have your access to the extension? And she said, I can't get those out. And I said, well, what if I get disconnected? And she said, well, you'll have to call back. Darn, if I didn't get disconnected. Plus, I went online, and I found the tree trimming complaint department.
Sure.
And wrote them a letter, and I read it here from Mount High. So I think the whole company needs a meeting.
I hear you. I guess if there's any, you know, first off, you know, I apologize for the disconnect on the hotline. If you want the people, that's the head of the complaint department, Brian and I are it. So I can leave you the, I can leave you my phone number and... What's that? Sure. Yeah. No, I understand. But that's not gonna happen.
Thank you for coming out, that was a small challenge. But what is the recourse? Let's say Asplin is aggressive, and they cut down a tree that does not agree to. What is the recourse? Is that something that we would contact you directly? Is there a financial commitment, reimbursement, what is the plan?
So we're very clear that with the tree trimming contractor companies, right? A tree does not get removed without a signed permit, right? And if that did happen, and that got to Joe and I, trust me, there'd be repercussions.
Either whether it's not the property or easements?
Yeah, correct.
Correct.
Yeah, we would come out, obviously, with the homeowner and work with them on that.
So you would, obviously, the details depending on the situation, but there would be an accommodation financially or such with the homeowner to accommodate for something?
Yeah, so Joe, we never really touched on phase four of our process that's in here, right? And that, you know, around phase three, I got it. Thanks for reminding me. But phase four is our auditing process, right? So we go back, when we're done with the work, to make sure that, one, it was done according to the plan, right? We ask the customer, we give them an opportunity to provide a survey to us, that, you know, were you satisfied with what we did, right? And we also validate the work is being done to the specifications that we asked for, too. So we also follow up with the work when it wants to complete as well, and that's phase four, and obviously, we didn't spend much time on that today.
Can you tell me what phase you're in right now, for someone? We're in two.
Timeline, timeframe, is there one set for movie two phase, for hour?
For our community, what was communicated to you was basically the first week of September is when our goals were. But obviously, with what we've heard here, we got some follow-up to do, right? So...
I don't know where that can be made, that might have been committed to some people at Agribusiness September. I last noticed July 23rd, and six was on the list, so I guess...
So it depends, because there's a number of different, there's a number of different circuits and, you know... It depends, but the bottom line is, from what I'm hearing, we got some follow-up to do here.
If you trim a tree, and if they're bad, are you guys responsible for their damage?
Yeah, if you would, yeah. If you would call us in that situation, we'd come back out. But again, we...
Yeah, we...
Yeah, if the tree's unhealthy, it's not safe for you, nor is it safe for, you know...
So you would remove it?
Yes.
And you're causing it?
Yes.
So you said you're currently on phase two. Do you have anything from phase one, the government and community outreach, letters and phone calls that you sent? Do you have records of all that? Because I don't remember seeing the media communication. I don't recall getting a letter or phone call. It seems like everyone was just getting these tickets. So how did we get into phase two, if we haven't correctly gone through phase one? So you and I did have a meeting.
So we had a meeting. So I don't know how they missed the community portion of phase one, but Michael and I did meet. In June. But it... And in June, the letters were supposed to have gone out from DTE to the customers. But that's DTE's responsibility, not the city's responsibility.
Correct, that's absolutely right.
And how about the media communication? Was there any follow-up with the media communication? Any kind of newspaper article about this meeting, about the plans going on?
Is DTE here?
No, about what DTE was planning on doing in our community.
So we have a process where a press release is released to some of the local papers. I'll have to defer to the representative of the South Lion Herald that's here tonight, regarding to that. But we do, as part of our program, we do make every effort to send press releases to the newspaper that covers the community that we're going into.
Here's one. The South Lion Herald dated August 13th. That tells me I was supposed to get a letter on July 20th, so that's why I'm here tonight, because I thought I got left out.
I got a door taken on 20th. As far as press goes, you guys have got some pretty bad press now. I hope that you make good here, I really do, because it would look good for you in your media. I mean, it doesn't look good right now, what happened in West Wolf Field, but I'm sure there's a reason to apply your lawsuit. You know, that's, here's a house on all of us.
So I know both of you have a lot to talk about, hey, we leave here tonight. Give us an overview of what your thought process is, you know, follow-up, execution items that you think that you need to do. Maybe we all meet here again next week, same time. And what happens from now, definitely?
So the first thing, you know, we're gonna talk with the contractor, right, this evening, right? Making sure that we get on the same page, right? Obviously, there seems to be some gaps in our communication, and we apologize for that, and we're gonna make it right, right? We would like to get your contact information personally here, right? So Joe and I would personally follow up with each and every one of you here. And again, we are, one thing that hasn't wavered, right? We've seen maybe some opportunities for us to improve here, but one thing we haven't wavered on, right, is we are not gonna do any work on anyone's property until we have the agreement of the homeowner, right? And we are staying true to that, right? And we wanna make sure that we stay true to that. That is the principal change that we have made in our program over the last five months, right? We wanna work with customers every single step of the way. We don't want you to be surprised or upset by the work that we wanna do to the trees, right? And we are trying to find the balance between safety, reliability, and protecting the, you know, the beauty of the communities, right? And that's the balance that we have to work together collectively, together, right? It's a two-way process between us and you, and we are committed to working through that with you, each and every step of the way. And if that means Joe and I have to be there, we will be there, right? And we've been in a lot of communities, we've dealt with a lot of customers and residents, right? And we've been very happy with that, we've been able to reach agreements and an understanding of what's gonna happen, and then we will get the work done. So again, we totally apologize, right, for some of the communication gaps here today, right? So, you know, I'm not gonna stand here and try to defend it, right? I'm gonna apologize for it, and I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna fix it, right? And I will follow up, and Joe and I will follow up with each and every single one of you, right? And we will continue the true premise of the program, which is, no surprises, we're gonna work with you every single step of the way. And so that's kinda where my mind is at right now, at 8:15 in the evening.
Well, pulling that off will be very helpful for you guys, because you have, you've created a really adversarial position right now. So if you end up performing as you state you're going to do, that's gonna go a long ways towards people saying, well, okay, we're through that hurdle, so...
And I would also encourage you, too, so I know a lot of you have neighbors, right? And maybe they couldn't attend this evening, too. So if you have other neighbors that have similar concerns, right, feel free to pass the phone number on as well. And we'd be more than happy to follow up with them as well.
Oh, excuse me, from my side, I just have, I know we just have a couple of final comments that I'll make for the rest of the night. And it's just basically, I just wanna thank you for coming tonight. And as you mentioned, I think communication is key, and communicating with the residents. And just so everybody knows what's going on, so I appreciate your commitments. But I'll leave it with a few points. Just please practice responsible tree maintenance as you promised. Please live up to your commitments. I've seen how this has played out in other communities, and it has not ended well. And finally, I still would be asking my fellow council members to consider a resolution, as other communities have done, encouraging responsible tree maintenance, which we've talked about before. But I've looked at the past, and I still think it is needed, and that's something I would be interested in voting on at the next city council meeting on Monday, which I've already have asked would be on the city council agenda. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Any other final questions for Joe and I? Thank you for your time this evening, and thanks for having us, and we will be in contact with you. So we have a couple, Mike, maybe you can help? I don't know if you have a piece of paper that we could release up?
Yeah.
So if we can get names and name and a contact phone number, and we'll begin to follow up.
Do you want an address?
Uh, yeah, please.
Name, address, phone number.
Name, address, and phone number.
Are we gonna be backing up to phase one and going through that process of...
Give Joe and I an opportunity to see where...
No, we're gonna correct the whole thing, it's not just the, it's not just the people in the room. It's we're gonna, we're gonna work with, as Brian already said, we're gonna work with the contractors and talk to the planners, and we're gonna go back and talk to every one of them. Because I assume that it's only a few amount that are here, that if what you've identified is gonna be most likely consistent.
Did I answer your question?
We're backing up to phase one.
You really need to start over. I mean, just the whole comprehensive thing, start over, yeah.
We just started a signup sheet down here for your contacts, so everybody get a chance to sign in on that, please.
And then I would ask that the city make a copy of that, please, as well.
Very good.
For our records.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming on. Appreciate your feedback.
I'd like to thank DTE for coming and facing the forces. And I really wanna commend this group. You could've been a little more hostile than you were. You're restraining yourself well. I mean, that's, that says something about South Lion, I think. Anyways, we're hopeful that this will get straightened around and go from there. All right, thank you. For the sake of our TV audience, this meeting was approximately one hour long. We'll go ahead and suspend it now, thank you.